I hereby reconvene the July 23, 2013 meeting of the Marion County School Board at 6:00 P.M. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I'm requesting everyone in the audience please turn off your cellphone or put them on vibrate. Board this evening for our inspiration and pledge, we have Ms. Michelle Kilman, the Title One Coordinator, and she's going to come up and bring us some very special guests.
Thank you for having us here tonight. Experts tell us that ninety percent of brain development occurs before age five. So it's very important that we have a focus on early childhood education programs such as Summer VPK. Tonight I have with me two of our outstanding Summer VPK teachers, Ms. McGrath and Ms. Thompson from Madison Street, and their class that is ready for kindergarten.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to improve it for which it stands, one nation, undivided, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm ready, here I come, I'm gonna sparkle and shine. I can see my wheels and count to ten, name my colors out and in. I can pay attention and learn no rules, I am ready to go to school. I'm ready, here I come, I'm gonna sparkle and shine. I'm ready, here I come, I'm gonna sparkle and shine. I can take my slippers and snap my snaps, brush my teeth and take a bath. I can dust my soap and tie my shoes, I am ready to go to school. I'm ready, here I come, I'm gonna sparkle and shine. I'm ready, here I come, I'm gonna sparkle and shine. Say please excuse me, thank you too, use good manners, all I do, I care for other times, I need you. I am ready to go to school. I'm ready, here I come, I'm gonna sparkle and shine. I'm ready, here I come, I'm gonna sparkle and shine. I can throw my clothes on myself, share my toys with someone else, I can read my turn and listen to, I am ready to go to school. I'm ready, here I come, I'm gonna sparkle and shine. I'm ready, here I come, I'm gonna sparkle and shine. I am laugh and jump and sing, I am ready to try new things like sparkle and shine in all I do, I am ready to go to school. I'm ready, here I come, I'm gonna sparkle and shine. I'm ready, here I come, I'm gonna sparkle and shine. I'm gonna sparkle and shine. I'm gonna sparkle and shine.
Thank you for having us.
Mr. Chairman, with the exception of agenda items PH eight, PH nine, and D six five, which have been withdrawn entirely, I recommend approval of the agenda for the July 23, 2013 School Board Meeting with the materials in the Board Packet. Those materials distributed to Board Members at the meeting, the audio recording and DVD included as part of the official record of the meeting.
May I have a motion on the Superintendent's recommendation?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. James, second by Ms. Boynton. All those in favor, please say aye. All opposed? Motion passes five zero. Madam Secretary, you're gonna have to vote for me. My system went down. I'll bring it back up. Okay. Okay, let me see if I can. Did you vote for him? Okay, that's why it's not bringing it up. All right. Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the June 6, 2013 Administrative Briefing and Work Session, the June 11, 2013 School Board Meeting, the June 30, 2013 Administrative Briefing and Work Session, the June 25, 2013 School Board Meeting? Need a motion, a second please.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Boynton, second by Ms. Ely. Are any additions or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. All opposed? And the motion, I believe, will pass five zero. May I have a motion to adopt Resolution 13 dash zero four, authorizing the issuance of Tax Anticipation Notes Series 2013 of the School District of Marion County, Florida? I need a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. James, second by Ms. Boynton. Mr. Superintendent, do you want to say something about this?
Only if there are questions from the Board. We discussed it before at a work session. You already know this is coming. Our consultants are here. If you have any questions for them.
All right. There's no further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye. All opposed? And the motion passes, I believe it's gonna pass five zero. Yes, it does. May I have a motion to adopt new Board Policy 6.548, Shared Sick Leave?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. James, second by Ms. Ely. Mr. Superintendent.
Mr. Chairman, this Board Policy has been developed so the district may permit employees to donate accrued sick leave to employees who are not family members.
Declare a public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to address the Board on this new Board Policy? Seeing none, are there? Did we have any? No, we did not. Board, I bring it back to you. Any discussion on?
Mr. Crawford, I believe it's the best thing that's happened in a way we can help each other, especially people outside of our family, you know? And we see the need so desperately in our school system, and I'm so glad that we're taking this out and we're embracing it, and we're able to help each other in this way. So I'm very pleased that it's happening.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? If not, all those in favor, please say aye. All opposed? And I believe that's going to pass five zero. May I have a motion, and it does, it passes five zero. May I have a motion to adopt revised job classification description for Deputy Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction and the Director of Finance? I need a motion and a second please.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Boynton, second by Ms. Ely. Mr. Superintendent.
These job classification descriptions have been revised to update those supervised by the employees in these positions and to provide consistency with other job classification descriptions.
Thank you. Declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address these revised job classification descriptions? Seeing none, Ms. Fluckett, do we have any? All right, I'll bring it back to the Board. Mr. James.
At this time, all of these positions are filled. Am I correct? These current positions that we're talking?
Yes, sir. These are currently filled, positions that reflecting job descriptions and then upgrading to our, the status that we're upgrading all of our positions to. Yes, sir. All are filled.
Anything else?
I just think this gives our management team a better flexibility, that little additions that they were onto this. So some thought went into it.
Seeing no further discussion, I'll call the question. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed? And I believe that's gonna pass five zero. Motion passes five zero. May I have a motion to adopt revised job classification description for Deputy Superintendent of Operations, Director of Technology and Information Services? A motion and a second please.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Boynton, second by Ms. Ely. Mr. Superintendent.
Mr. Crawford, these job classification descriptions have been revised to update those supervised by the employees in these positions, as well as to clarify the job duties and responsibilities, and to provide consistency with other job classification descriptions.
Declare a public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to address the Board on these revised job classification descriptions? Seeing none, I bring it back to the Board. If not?
I'll look for it.
Thank you, sir. All those in favor, please say aye. All opposed? That's gonna pass five zero. May I have a motion to adopt revised job classification descriptions, including title changes for Executive Director, Curriculum and Instruction, Student Services, for elementary and secondary education, School Development and Evaluations? A motion and a second please.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion by Ms. Ely, second by Ms. Boynton. Mr. Superintendent.
The revised job classification description for Executive Director, Curriculum and Instruction includes title changes to reflect Executive Director's curriculum and instruction that include the elimination of staff development, elementary education, and secondary education, and the addition of K-12 academic services. Student Services and School Development and Evaluation remain included in the title. The revised job classification description also clarifies job duties and responsibilities, as well as provides consistency with other job classification descriptions.
Thank you. Declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address the Board concerning the revised job classification descriptions? Seeing none, Ms. Fluckett, none? Bring it back to the Board. Board, I move the question then. All in favor, please say aye. The motion passes five zero. May I have a motion to adopt a revised job classification description, including a title change for Senior Web Design Analyst? Motion, second. Sorry, moving ahead too quick. Ms. Boynton, I believe, made the motion. Who was the second from?
Second.
Oh, Mr. James was the second. Okay, Mr. Superintendent.
Mr. Chairman, the revisions to this job classification description include a title change to conform with the 2013-14 Staffing Plan. Senior Web Design Analyst will become Web Design Programmer Analyst. The revisions also more accurately reflect the job duties and responsibilities of the position and update the training and experience, as well as provide consistency with other job classification descriptions.
Declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address the revised job classification descriptions? Seeing none, Ms. Fluckett, nothing? I'll bring it back to the Board. I move the question then. All in favor, please say aye. Motion passes five zero. May I have a motion to adopt new job classification description for Supervisor, Employment Services, and Retirement Specialist? Motion and a second please.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Boynton, second by Ms. Ely. Superintendent.
Mr. Chairman, the units for these job classification descriptions have been included in the 2013-14 Staffing Plan and the current budget. An employee has been in the position of Supervisor of Employment Services for five years, and an employee has been performing the duties and responsibilities of the Retirement Specialist for thirteen years.
Declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address these new job classification descriptions? Seeing none? Bring it back to the Board.
Call the question.
Thank you, sir. All those in favor, please say aye. All opposed?
I'm done. I gotta break in.
Would you like for me to vote for you, Ms. Boynton?
Please.
In the affirmative?
Yes.
Mr. Crawford, I don't have your vote either.
And the motion passes five zero. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted?
So moved.
Second.
Do you have a motion by Mr. James, second by Ms. Boynton? Pardon?
I'm not there yet.
All right.
Mr. James, second by Ms. Boynton?
Yes. All those in favor, please say aye. Is anybody online on this one? Okay. All right, and the motion passes five zero. At this time, I'd like to recognize the Superintendent. Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In accordance with Florida statutes, the Board approved a budget presentation timeline on May 14, 2013. For your convenience, an additional copy of that timeline has been provided to you today, along with a copy of the tentative budget for fiscal year 2013-14. Mrs. Bossenellis and Mrs. Posada will be handing it out to you in just a moment. Additionally, as you know, a series of work sessions to review this tentative budget have been scheduled for August 8, August 22, and if necessary, September the 5. I'd like to ask everyone and remind everyone to please bring this copy with you to the work sessions, and as always, please feel free to call any members of our staff or me if you have any questions or concerns regarding this tentative budget proposal.
Board, may I have a motion to receive the tentative budget for fiscal year 2013-14, approve it for advertising purposes only, and set a public hearing on the tentative budget for Tuesday, July 30, at 5:30 P.M. in the School Board Meeting Room? Like I said, we're just, this is just strictly for advertising purposes.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion by Ms. James, second by Ms. Ely. Any discussion?
All the question.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye. The advertising of the budget and the setting of the meetings has passed five zero. May I have a motion to approve the following donations? $1,380 to Bellevue High School from the Bellevue High School Girl Soccer Boosters; a 1997 ambulance valued at $14,000 to Community Technical and Adult Education from the Department of Financial Services, Division of the State Fire Marshal, Bureau of Fire Standards and Training, Florida State Fire College; $1,500 to Dr. N.H. Jones Elementary School from Allen &amp; Wendy McMurray; $1,000 to Emerald Shores Elementary School from Lockheed Martin; $1,000 to Forest High School from Cisco Food Services of Central Florida; $3,000 to Fort King Middle School from Florida FFA Foundation Incorporated; $6,295.10 to Fort King Middle School from the Rockefeller Philotrophic Advisors via the Public Education Foundation; $5,000 to Marion Technical Institute from Lockheed Martin; $2,095 to Ocala Springs Elementary School from the Ocala Springs PTO; $1,000 to Reddick Collier Elementary School from Wells Fargo Bank. I need a motion and a second please.
So moved.
Motion by?
Second.
Mr. James, second by Ms. Ely. All those in favor, please say aye. All opposed? Do you believe that will pass five zero? It seems I voted, probably will. And it does, pass five zero. Ms. Ely, may I ask you to thank the community tonight?
Surely. These are ten different schools that are getting some monetary support from not just businesses, but individual parents and PTOs, and we appreciate so much their help, and you recognize the need that our schools have, and we appreciate so much you giving back to the schools any way you can. There's a lot of in-kind service that happens too during the year that doesn't have a monetary value, but this is, this is great. The ambulance, 1997 ambulance, worth, you know, that's pretty good. So thank you so much, community, for helping and continue to support our schools. We so much appreciate what you do.
Thank you. All right. Board, this is a motion that has been submitted by one of our, one of the members of the Board. May I have a motion to approve a Board Directive to further discuss the naming of a building in honor of former Superintendent Robert McDonwoody at the September 19, 2013 Administrative Briefing and Work Session during a review of revisions to Board Policy 8.54. I need a motion and a second please.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. James, second by Ms. Boynton. Mr. James?
Yes, upon consensus at the work session to honor the name requesting and sequentially approval of revision needed at Board Policy 8.54 at a public hearing, tentatively scheduled to be, scheduled for November 26, the naming request will be placed on the Board Agenda, tentatively December 10, for a formal consideration by the Board.
Board members, we have a motion on the floor, any discussion?
I have some discussion. I believe that this shouldn't be the action of the Board. I think it needs to not be in our arena. We need to take it to the foundation and let them take care of the naming of schools or facilities, take it out of our hands. I've looked into the Junior College. They have nine buildings named after people who have really contributed a lot. Some are donor-based, some are recognition-based, and I would like us to look into more of that before we start naming a building after somebody. We have so many people in our school system. Every superintendent has had something that they've done to really bring the school system forward, and I really am a little bit hesitant about having one person brought to the, you know, forefront because of what he did back in the 60s when we have, every superintendent should be recognized.
I want to, excuse me, Mrs. Superintendent, I want to bring to members to the Board that we do have coming up the Board Policy Change on this, so that, I mean, Policy Change 8.54, I've already written it. If you want, please just submit some more information so that we can really have a working new policy, because it's already in effect for us to change the policy, although we may not agree on all effects of it, but we can change this policy. It's already in effect to be brought before in September, am I right?
Yes, ma'am.
So I would recommend that we, as a Board, just look at that policy and bring our suggestions to it, and I can email that to you again, my recommendations, and then we can add our recommendations to it. But I wholeheartedly support this effort on your behalf, Mr. James, and I thank you for bringing it to us, because we have a lot of educators in our community. We can't name every building after someone. We all know that, but there is some type of way we can honor some people in some way. But if we look at the policy, you all know I am looking for financial, a financial as part of it. So as we look forward, we need to be thinking, look at the policy, I'll send it to all the Board Members, my suggestions, and so we could come together and have a real good policy. I'd appreciate that, to work together with it.
Ms. Stacy.
So what we're voting on tonight is just that we're gonna take this to a workshop and talk about it. We're not. Right, right. That's all.
Well, no, yes and, I think yes and no, because if you, if you pass this, and I'm just telling you I'm not gonna vote for it. If you pass this, I think you're basically saying that if we do make a change in the Board Policy, that we are going to do this. And to be honest with you, I'm not a big fan of naming anything after, after anybody. I think it only, a lot of times it ends up catching us flack, because you always seem to have somebody that didn't agree with it. When it comes to naming a school, I think we, I've not had anybody complain about when we've created these names, that we've named our schools based on maybe where they located in the community and things like that. I mean, the years I've been on the Board, I just think we're going into an area that I don't feel comfortable with, but we're doing it before we've even had a chance to even sit down and see if there is a desire to make a change in the current Board Policy. So I think it's, you know, the old saying.
So we need to address the policy first.
Yeah, I think you need to, that, because this directs, this says, if it's changed, then, you know, we're, to name something after this gentleman.
Okay, and again, the issue is, it's a work session.
Right.
And this is where I feel that we need to discuss all these things, where we have adequate time to bring out all of these things, and everybody else is concerned. And I think this is what I'm asking here, is that we take it to a work session, and once we get to the work session, then we can discuss it.
Well, but if that's not the way it's written in this directive, it looks like if we make a change in our work session to taking donations and different things, you know, to name different buildings and things, if we, that, I mean, I would like to strike whatever I need to strike, Mr. Crawford, that will allow us to have a conversation. Because I read this and I was confused about it. That's the reason I asked that question. If there's something that I could strike in it that would make it clear that this is just a workshop to discuss the monetary.
Well, we've already got a, yeah, a workshop, and it's not limited strictly to.
The ideas that Mrs. Boynton had.
Yeah, I mean, it'd be an open, it'd be an open thing, so anybody could, you know, because I know there's been some complaints by some about the length of time that you have to be deceased before we could.
Right, right.
You know, so basically, it's an open conversation on the policy, and so, and since we've already got it scheduled.
So then that's what the duplication.
I really think this is needless, or it's, in my opinion, is kind of forcing the Board's hand.
Well, when I look at it, it's an opportunity for a discussion.
And we're gonna have it.
Okay, and the discussion will be at the work session. Now, what is determined from the work session is after the discussion. That's the way I perceive this.
But aren't we already, when is our work session scheduled?
September 19. September 19.
Okay, so why don't we just take care of all of it then, and?
I would think that would be the.
And not add any extra stuff to it. And so that means that I guess. And so that means that, um, I guess I really don't feel like I support this motion. I support the work session we already have scheduled. Right?
We already have a work session scheduled.
We have one scheduled.
So-
So you wanna move this to that work session, just to discuss it then without any, but it's, I understand what she's saying. She's saying this is saying after this vote, with your positive vote, then we're gonna-
We're kind of locked in at our, at our work session in September. So I think I would, maybe I would, I guess I'll just vote no for the, on this, and then we'll go on into our work session that we already have scheduled. I mean, that's my opinion.
We're voting for the work session, is that-
No.
Well, we already got the work session scheduled.
If we vote yes with this, then we, it locks us into if we make a change, we must name after this.
Can we have, can we amend this to say that we would have open discussion?
Yeah, but the- Ms. Flotter?
Sorry.
The problem that, that I see is by the nature of this motion, it is in essence directing the board to take a action if we take another action, which I don't think is, is appropriate, okay?
Right. I don't think, I think it's putting the cart before the horse a little bit.
Okay, and again, what I'm bringing to the board is an opportunity to, to bring this discussion to a work session.
And we already, September nineteenth.
Okay, and I can live with that as long as that we are coming with an open mind on the discussion.
Okay.
You know, if we're coming with an open mind, just like Mr. Crawford, you already indicated that you, that's, your mind is closed. Okay, that's, I understand that.
So, my recommendation, board, is, is, is vote no on this. We've already got a work session scheduled. This is just piling on. All right, any other discussion? Saying no? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No.
I don't believe that's gonna be four. And the motion fails four to one. All right, um, the boards, uh, let me just do some meeting reminders before we go to, uh, committee reports and, and concerns. Tonight, a special meeting was scheduled for July thirtieth, two thousand thirteen, at five thirty P. M. to hold a public hearing on the tentative budget for FY two thousand thirteen, uh, fourteen. For our, our, our new members, uh, the, the purpose of that is to set the maximum, uh, mileage rates that can be, be charged. They can be lowered from that point, but the state requires you just to lock in the top end, and then you can, you can move downward. The next Administrative Briefing and Work Session is scheduled for Thursday, August eighth, two thousand thirteen, at nine A. M. for the purpose, the purpose of the work session is to review the budget for the fiscal year thirteen fourteen. As noted early, there's one of three work sessions that we have, uh, scheduled to review the, uh, the budget prior to the request from the superintendent to approve the budget on September tenth. All right, and now we're to, uh, committee reports and, and any concerns board members have, and we'll start with Ms. Stacy.
Okay. I'd much like to say, I know I do things a little bit different than most people do. I guess good old Albert Einstein said, "Some people follow the crowd and some people choose to kind of walk their own path." And I sometimes walk my own path. And last week, I felt a little bullied by Mr. James, but we talked about it after the meeting, because I choose to make my decisions meeting with different individuals in different ways. And Mr. , Mr. Um, James kindly apologized to me for suggesting that I was not doing things correctly just because I didn't do them the way he does them. But I don't believe that it's necessary sometimes to attend all of the meetings that some people like to go to, like the State School Board Association meeting. And I believe if I go once a year, I can have dialogue with fellow board members around the state and find out what's going on in districts around the state, and that's all that's necessary for me. Um, I think we make a good team. I tend to not go with the crowd, and some of my fellow board members enjoy the education crowd. I do not. I like to travel alone. While my board members were off in Tampa, I was doing other things. I was, um, attending forums. I was attending debates on Common Core. I was in Tallahassee discussing things with legislators and senators and different people and, and other organizations that I'm, I'm working with there. And I've been saying for months that our district might think a little bit before we try to rush ahead to be the first one in the state to spend the most money to implement the national testing con- with the National Testing Consortium, Consortium Park. Um, as of last Wednesday, I have been following this story very, very closely. I have been working with the opposition to Common Core very, very closely. I have been on many, 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 um, statewide conference calls. I have started my own Nancy Stacy's School Forum on Facebook, which is a virtual twenty-four-hour-a-day town hall meeting. I'm talking with parents and teachers at three o'clock in the morning on Facebook about some of the issues facing, um, facing America with our education system. I am pleased to announce something that probably wasn't announced at the State School Board Association meeting, that Common Core National Testing is hanging on by a thread right now. Our state senator, our Florida State Senator, um, President Ga- Gates and our Speaker of the House, um, Weatherford, have both sent a letter to Mr. Tony Bennett, our State Commissioner, Education Commissioner, that they want to pull out of the National Testing Consortium Park. They want to work towards that angle and go back to working with things in our own state. So I'm very, very happy about that. We've worked hard to make that happen, um, many, many hours to make that happen. Another issue that I've been following, that I have been following on my own, is one of the, and I'm surprised that the State School Board Association didn't talk about it, but I'm not surprised because their agenda's different than mine, is the latest legislation out of the, um, out of the session, this past session, that probably is the largest good deal for money that the legislature has passed down to us in three years. They will allow us to school average to meet class size if we start a school choice, um, policy in our district. Spoke with Mr. Crawford and the board about this at our workshop, and we'll be talking about this a little more. That could save us millions of dollars because it's gonna, we are on very short vine with having the state, um, get, let us kind of skid by on some of the, um, fines and fees that they charge us when we go beyond the class size. And they have given us an option of open enrollment to meet a, um, to give us an extra opportunity to school average to meet class size. So I'm excited about that, and I think that would be probably one of the best things that could happen to education and to our students. So, um, this is legislation that I was watching. The state superintendents were watching this from one side. I knew a bill was traveling through charter school legislation. I had been watching that bill for a long time. As the one that superintendent was talking with me about, we had spoken about, um, that would allow the districts to school average as we did three years ago, did not pass. But I knew it did not pass because we had other legislation traveling through at another angle, and that did pass. It slid in under the radar, and so I'm very happy about that. And so that gives us an option to save millions of dollars. We do not have to provide transportation, and I believe that is the best way possible for parents to speak without- Parents are afraid to speak out when there are issues in their schools. They're afraid to speak out because they fear their child will suffer. I do not believe that's the case, but that's what, that's what they believe. But parents will be able to speak with their feet if the district considers an open enrollment policy. And I believe many children that are in the, um, homeschooling programs will probably come back into the school system. So I'm looking forward to us talking a little bit more about that at a workshop, Mr. Crawford, and I thank you for that opportunity.
All right, thank you. Ms. Ely?
Um, I wanted to once again encourage parents, um, when your children, um, attend school this year. Many of our schools have new principals, so this is the time to go meet your, your child's principal before all the grand march of all the kids come in, in later August. So please go and, um, get an opportunity to meet with your new principal of your child's school. I also wanted to share with you part of our consent agenda. You don't get to see on T. V., but many of those are grants, uh, that are federal grants that, um, Marion County gets that help many of our, our, our children in different situations. There's a Title III immigrant grant that, uh, this past year, and it's, it's going to, uh, continue next year. It's originally named, and the grant was only five schools. It's, it's, um, it's increasing next year. But the goals of the grant was to familiarize immigrant students and families with American culture and assist them in becoming acclimated to school and community resources available. This is just one of the many grants that Marion County, um, gets, and I'm just so pleased to see it, and it doesn't come out of our budget. It's federal. So we get that money, we put it to good use, and, um, I want to thank all the people that are behind that. Our Title I, um, Rhodia Berry and, and her group, um, a lot of the title people, uh, have been involved in all the grants. So thank you very much, and I know these grants are gonna continue this year, and new grants will be, um, added on. So, uh, be aware of all those parents. There's lots of money out there that we're spending on our kids.
Ms. Boynton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Unlike Ms. Stacy, you know, I do, I too believe that, um, the legislation going to Tallahassee is, is a way to help, uh, bring funds back to our, our community or to make a change in some of the legislation. So I've shared with our superintendent as we're, as well as with the chairman that I've made contact with, uh, Tallahassee to meet with the governor, to share some ideas to bring funds to our, um, county without raising taxes or, and hopefully they will. They did get back to me as I shared it with the superintendent that, yes, we have your, um, your information, and we're gonna try to juggle you in the calendar, and hopefully, you know, I've already, um, shared with, with superintendent my, my game plan, so hopefully I'll be able to tell everybody, you know, if something positive happened for us. Because there's, I mean, it starts there, and we, we, we are just a body that just have policymaking. So if we could just get, if, and with the support of the community, uh, we can make some changes here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. James.
I had to, I had to leave early at our work session, and I just wanted to commend our facilities staff for really enlightening the board on what you, you guys really do in reference to planning, in reference to what, uh, what we're looking at when we look at our overall school district. Everything from the open classroom, people were enlightened a little bit about that, and they were enlightened about how, uh, how funding for different projects i- is, is presented to the board. But, uh, working on that, I was hoping that people, when they li- was listening to our facilities, would understand a little bit more about the impact fees. We did have a, uh, committee meeting, and we had three of the board members there, and it was a very productive meeting. The things that I requested and asked for was questions in writing in reference to the impact fees. And I know Ms. Morris had worked on that, and, uh, she also provided me an email today, which I will forward to you. And one of the questions that I asked and was very important to me, uh, and it said, you asked me, uh, me, uh, you asked me of the school board, could ask the county commission for an extension of time within which to utilize the educational system impact. You all will begin to copy of that, but I wanted to just share this with you. I want to, I want to say this. I remain concerned about the use of our impact fees and the possibility of losing a portion of these fees for failure to use them within the period required. I have reviewed, uh, the county ordinance, and in section two point, uh, zero five F, I have found a provision whereas the school board can request an extension of up to three years. This section also refer to section ten dash two seven seven B of the county ordinance for an addition, for additional detail. I am passing, I'm passing around copies of these. Do we have copies of these to pass around? These two sections for you to read. You will see that in order for us, uh, order to obtain an extension, the more, the board must be able to show the, uh, county commission that within the period of extended improvements are scheduled to be constructed that relate to a fee payer's development activity. We need the staff to determine if we can meet this requirement. If we can, then we need to apply for, for that extension as soon as possible. This is a, this is a separate issue from the Francis Marion Military Academy's request for impact fees. However, the two are absolutely related. Because we want to know about the school board, the use of these fees, before we go on, uh, go on to any further, further, uh, discussion with Francis Marion. Board, I need to have you to agree that this is something that we can direct the superintendent to bring to us at an, uh, at another board meeting about the extension, if we can do that. So this is, uh, something I think could be a major benefit to the school district if we can do that. Okay, so this is, uh, one of these things that I feel is so important in us discussing what we do and what we can do with the impact fee. Uh, you all should have that information, if you would read it. And when we come back to our next, uh, board session, if it's agreeable, then, then we ask the superintendent, uh, to, uh, direct its personnel to see if this can be done, and it would meet the requirement.
Do I have a consensus from the board on Mr. James's suggestion?
And thank you, Mr. James, for doing some, some really digging into this. That seems to be your niche. Thank you.
I don't know whether that's my niche or not, but thank you. One other thing that I-
Well, if, if I have consensus now, would you like me to go ahead and begin pursuing this now, at least make an inquiry?
And you understand what, uh, is being requested?
To reckon, at least to research the possibility of, uh, of legitimately following the rules and requesting an extension of the time used to spend the impact fees. Yes, we can do that, and I'll, I'll bring back something to you as soon as I can find something.
All right.
Okay. Ms. Morris, is there anything else that I need to share with you?
Okay, some other things. Uh, board, you, you all are showing me a lot of energy and enthusiasm for what you do, and I don't want to be Mr. Killjoy. But I just want to say this to you. Let's let, let's look at some of the things that we have been, that we have in place to help us with our endeavors. We have about forty-two thousand students in our district. And when we go and we sit and we talk to our legislature, legislators, we're talking for forty-two thousand students. And this is how we should be. We should have that contact where we, we know these legislators individually and things. What I will tell you is we can connect the dots and we go and utilize. The Central Florida Coalition would have eight hundred and fifty thousand students. If we begin to make those connections and dots and meet, and then once we are doing our part on the local area, but when we come in and hit them with eight hundred and fifty thousand students, our voices will have a larger range. And this is why, uh, this is why I encourage you, to all of you. If you get a chance to go and network with the people in this coal- coalition, if you get a chance to just talk with them and say, "Hey, this is what we're doing in Ocala." I will guarantee you that your voices will be heard when they say, "Well, we're from Ocala," but when you go down there and you got over two or three hundred thousand, uh, uh, parents there. So I caution you on saying, I want to be an isolationist. I caution you on saying that we are not connected, because we are connected. We need to utilize our connection. As we get ready to start another school year, I know this, that in order for us to make an impact, and I, I love Ms. Noonan's back there, because she understands the importance of what we need to do. But she also understands the importance of numbers. We can beat the drum in Ocala, but if we had a bigger drum, where we can get other people to believe in what we're trying to do in Ocala, our Marion County, then you would know that this is not just something that we are fighting for, but it's something that's concerning the whole state. So this is, this is my soapbox tonight. We want to look at what we want to do to help locally, but we also need to, uh, connect with the people that's out there that can help us do these things. That's all I have, Mr. Crawford. Thank you.
Ms. Morris? Madam Secretary, Ms. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of reminders for the board that this week and two more weeks, we will be following our summer schedule of four ten-hour days and then resuming our five-day work schedule on August the twelfth. I know it's sometimes hard to find us on Fridays, but in three weeks' time, we will be able to find us. Uh, Mrs. Stacy has already brought up the issue of Common Core. I'll share with you that we have- I'll share with you that we have about 200 teachers here who we consider our lead teachers. We follow the train... The train model in our district, and the over 200 teachers are participating in this very important training in the next four days. They're doing this during preschool. They'll be the ones taking this message back to and training our other teachers in the Common Core state standards. Let's not forget, as Mrs. Stacy's already brought up, the park assessment has come under question, but our students will be assessed by some measure relative to the Common Core state standards, and the way we teach is hugely important. Another issue to announce to you, that all of our elementary schools will be participating in a new lunch and breakfast program titled "The Community Eligibility Option" this coming school year. Currently, all elementary students may participate in a free breakfast program, and parents are not required to fill out any type of application form, which I must add saves schools and district personnel hundreds, if not thousands, of hours to verify that information. For 2013 and 14, this program will be expanded into the lunch hour for these elementary students. And this is a pilot program that we have been invited to participate in, and this will be available to the entire nation during school year 2014-15.
Mr. Towne, will it be all of the schools?
All elementary schools.
All elementary, all.
Yes, all elementary, free breakfast, free lunch, not necessarily do an application this year.
That's great.
And then, we will run a pilot program, monitor that, report our findings to the state, and we'll see how things go for the other districts later on.
That's great.
And then, a final note to you. I know you're encouraged to hear this information, because I'm encouraged also, you know, that we did go into a layoff and recall mode with 161 of our first-year teachers to date, and this may have even changed since I received this information at 5:00 this afternoon, but 133 of those first-year teachers have been recalled as of this time. So I just wanted to share that with you.
Is that full-time positions? Yes.
Pardon me?
Full-time positions?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. They've been recalled. Not that many have accepted. A number have chosen to do other things, but 133 of the 161 have been recalled and offered positions, in full-time teaching positions.
That's great.
That's all I have, sir.
All right. Before addressing expulsion matters, I wish to acknowledge that the board members have received the alternative placement list for students through June 27th, 2013. Are there any parents in the audience who wish to speak out on behalf of a student regarding a disciplinary matter? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the expulsion of student JD 13-59 and JD 13-89 with Educational Services through the 2013-2014 school year? I need a motion and a second.
Certainly.
Okay. We'll go with motion by Ms. Ely, second by Ms. Boynton. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And I believe that's going to pass 5-0. And it does. Board members, do you know of any further business and needs coming from the board this evening? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Someone.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Mr. James, second by Ms. Boynton. All those in favor, please say aye.
All right.
All opposed? And I believe that passes 5-0, and we will stand adjourned at 6:51.